It is 10:40, we're back. So can we move on to item seventeen? Accept the first quarter financial report for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. And city work program updates. Consider approving a budget modification. Increasing appropriations and revenues by $1,873,298 and $1,662,300 respectively. Consider approving the conversion of a limited term senior transportation planner to permanent. So let's have our staff report. Our staff here, okay, welcome Zach.
Thank you. So Christina was going to be part of this presentation, but I just got a text that she's, her power has now quit at her house. Don't know why, so she'll chime back in when she can.
Very good, so good evening again, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, Zach Horach, Finance Manager. I'll be covering the first quarter financial report. Here before you on this slide is a list of the agenda that we'll be covering as part of this presentation. I won't read through each of these. We'll be covering them specifically. And as we're accustomed to covering in these presentations, the budget reporting cycle. Just a reminder that we are here in the first quarter, the month of November, just kind of kicking off the first quarter of the fiscal year and we'll be back again. And for the mid-year report in early March. And then wrapping up with third quarter, the mid to late May. And then starting the process over with the proposed budget. So talking about the fiscal condition of the city and specifically as it relates to the previous full fiscal year, fiscal year 2019-20. And we're looking on this slide at the year-end actuals, excuse me, versus the budget for all city funds. And starting in the far left column and moving our way to the right. We look at the gray bars here indicate budget. The red bars would be the year-end actuals. And then these bluish gray, we'll call them blue, would indicate the variances between the budget and actuals. So comparing on the expenditure side, on the far left side, we came in $15.1 million lower than what was actually budgeted for. And that would be that variance between the 172 million and the 157 million. On the other side of the ledger, when we look at the city's revenues across all funds, we actually exceeded the revenue estimates that were included in the amended budget by approximately $2.2 million. And the slide that we're going to be moving to next is actually going to be a component or factoring or considering the difference in the actual revenues, the $171.4 million in respect to the actual expenditures, $157.5 million. Those are the two most important numbers that we look at when understanding how the general fund and all cities, city funds are doing from a fiscal health perspective. And so when we look at, when we take that $15 million, excuse me, the the revenues and expenditures and the actual comparison, it resulted in a $13.9 million surplus. And that was across again, all city funds. And we have the breakout between the general fund, the special revenue funds, debt service, capital project, enterprise funds, as well as the internal service funds. And when we look at the fiscal year, the current fiscal year 2020-21, the amended budget as of September 30th, 2020 is approximately $200 million. And to backtrack, we started in May of 2020 with the proposed budget. It came in at $113.79 million. And at that time, we were dealing right in the midst of COVID-19. And staff had communicated to council that we were going to be putting forth great efforts to making budget reductions across all categories. We were going to be making reductions to the materials accounts, contract services, putting forth strategies to increase the vacancy level. All in an effort to, to ensure that the impacts from COVID-19 were absorbed as sufficiently as possible, particularly in the general fund. And so as a result, there were budget reductions taken from the proposed budget, the $113 million, excuse me, $113 million. $7.2 million were reduced. And then we factored in or added in the capital improvement program, which was just over $4 million. And factoring in those reductions, as well as the addition or inclusion of the capital improvement program, there was a final adopted budget for the entire city of $110 million. And when we talk about the amended budget immediately on July 1st of 2020, all city funds take into consideration budget carryovers and encumbrance carryovers. So when we talk about carryover appropriations, that would be any unspent budget from the previous fiscal year that the city still has authorized by city council to expend on various purposes. Those get carried over into the subsequent year. The encumbrances would be any, again, authorized appropriations, but would be subject to, they are committed through contract. There is an obligation to pay, pay those funds. And there was a total of $89.5 million in total budget adjustments. We'll look at a more descriptive reconciliation of those budget adjustments right here. So we see that the budget, the, excuse me, the adopted budget for the current fiscal year across, broken out by fund, is the $110.5 million. We factor in the carryovers, encumbrances, as well as any council-approved adjustments subsequent to July 1st, but prior to September 30th. I know that these numbers are large. There isn't a whole lot of detail within these numbers, but I will note that as part of the agenda item, attachment C, provides an itemized reconciliation and detailed listing of each one of the carryovers and encumbrances, as well of the approved, as well as the approved adjustments authorized by council. Now again, looking at the first quarter performance. This is a three-year trend comparison, both the revenues and expenditures. We do this to just make sure that the city's revenues and expenditures, and in this case, in the general fund, are tracking historically. And we'll go into the various account classifications and discuss some of the, some of the variances this quarter over the previous first quarter. But what we can see here is that we are within the acceptable range or trends over the last three years. 13%, it is on the lower side, but with a 15% to 13% range, we're comfortable with that target. And on the expenditure side, coming in at 24%, which is significantly lower than the high side of the three-year trend. This is primarily due, again, we'll be covering the reasons for this, but primarily due to the budget reduction strategies that have been implemented this year. So here's a look at the general fund revenues, a first quarter of, first quarter of fiscal year, last fiscal year in respect to and in comparison to the current fiscal year. When we're looking at sales tax. So sales tax had a very positive impact in the first quarter. Cupertino, the city of Cupertino weathered the storm by benefiting tremendously from the business-to-business industry and the statewide transition to a work-from-home environment. Although there was a positive experience, staff do anticipate that this could be more of a one-time experience and foresee sales tax trends for the remainder of the year to decline. And that is really to say that we would not expect these types of quarterly performance figures on the sales tax classification. With that, we did significantly reduce the sales tax estimated budget figure for the current fiscal year by approximately 25% from proposed to the final adopted. And based on our current estimates, particularly when you consider the $8.7 million that was recognized in the first quarter, we are estimating exceeding the adopted budget estimates by approximately $3.3 million. And we're also hoping that that will continue to neutralize any adverse impacts or experiences within the transient occupancy tax category. When we look at that, that is probably the most glaring figure across the classifications, a $1.4 million variance in respect to last year's first quarter. Again, with continued shelter and place orders. And, and moving back into the purple tier, we would anticipate these types of performance or these types of revenue figures to come in from that hotel tax category. Some of the other items I'll highlight quickly. When we look at the other taxes and increase over the previous fiscal year first quarter of $272,000, this was due to a construction tax that was received for the construction and development of a new public storage facility. When we look at the intergovernmental revenue category, an increase of $421,000, this is predominantly due to the CAREZAC funding that was received. Now, we might anticipate seeing a larger figure because the city was granted or authorized $735,000 of CAREZAC funding. We received the second half of that allocation subsequent to, to the first quarter end. So when we come back in mid-year in March of 2021, we'll see that number increase even more sharply. And that will be reflecting the full CAREZAC allocation. So looking at the general fund expenditures, again, first quarter over first quarter in the two fiscal years, we see that employee compensation has decreased by just over $300,000. This is due to a higher level of vacancies that have been maintained. But conversely, we see that employee benefits have increased by just about that, that same amount and washed out that savings. And that's due to increases, excuse me, due to increases in health and workers' compensation benefit costs over the previous fiscal year. When we look at materials, a significant decline or decrease by approximately $485,000. Again, this is directly related to those budget reduction strategies and reducing material budgets across all city funds. Contract services, approximately $279,000 below the last year's first quarter. This is due to a reduction in contract services primarily in the Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Department as a result of COVID-19 and shelter-in-place orders. The services have not been offered or able to be offered to the same extent that they were last year. Transfers out, I will cover this briefly. There was a $590,000 decline. The transfers out from the general fund to other funds, this happens on an annual basis. They serve as operating subsidies to other funds. If it's special revenue funds, to the debt service fund, to fund the city's certificates of participation, to enterprise funds. The amount and to the extent of those transfers out from the general fund to those other funds is dictated based on the financial performance of those respective funds. There is a formula that is applied and an ultimate goal as part of the operating budget to maintain a 15% ending fund balance for each of the respected funds. And when we talk about 15% ending fund balance, that would be in respect to any of 15% of the budgeted expenditures in those respective funds. So one more point of clarification. When we see fluctuations in the transfers out, it would be due to one of two things. If we see a decrease in the transfers out from one year to the next, that would mean that revenues generally have exceeded expenses or expenditures in the other funds. When we see the general fund transferring out a higher amount, that would mean that expenditures were a bit higher than, than revenues in those other respective funds. And so when we look at general fund fund balance, we can see the fiscal year 2018-19 actuals, total ending fund balance of $58.9 million. And I want to skip ahead to the, the third column, the adopted budget. This is really a snapshot. When I say a snapshot, it is a projection as of approximately July 1st, 2020. And at that time, factoring in all the revenues and expenditures and where we at that time had projected to end the previous fiscal year 2019-20, we had estimated a total ending fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2020-21 at just under $52 million. Now, since then, there have been positive experiences across or within the general fund that have positively impacted the year-end projections. When we look at sales tax, sales tax for fiscal year 2019-20 had far exceeded expectations. One of the primary reasons for that was a double payment that was received from Apple. That was a one-time experience that positively impacted the city's sales tax. Property tax had come in significantly higher than originally estimated. Historically, the city does budget property taxes very conservatively and experienced positively in that classification as well. So with that to say, the current year-end projection for previous fiscal year is $65.5 million. And factoring in the new current projection, when we're considering the fiscal year 2020-21 budget, we would actually anticipate adding on to, to that beginning fund balance, the $65.5 million and ending it just over $70 million. When we're talking about that $70 million, it is important to understand the various components of that. And understanding that $18 million is restricted, the vast majority of that sits or resides, reserved or restricted for the Section 115 trust. There's currently a balance of $13.5 million. Anything that's well committed, the vast majority of, of the committed reserve, $19 million is the economic uncertainty reserve. And that's earmarked by, by city council. Again, the unassigned, or excuse me, the assigned fund balance classification that represents any outstanding obligations to pay, any outstanding contracts. And one of the most important figures to look at is the unassigned fund balance, the $29.56 million. Similar to how staff have taken recommendations to council in terms of timing, we do anticipate bringing forth a recommendation to continue adhering to the city's Section 115 trust policy and funding schedule an additional $2 million transfer to the pension rate stabilization program that will be a mid-year. And similar to years past, also recommending a transfer from the general fund to the capital reserve to continue funding capital projects. The extent of that transfer is yet to be determined. We'll have a clearer idea at the, the timing of mid-year. But right now, we would estimate approximately $5 million. And with that, I will jump into the first quarter recommended adjustments. This is slide before you, has a lot of information. We'll be covering each of these requests in the, in the subsequent slides. But this is a comprehensive look at the adjustments broken out by department and fund. The total request here at the bottom on the expenditure side is $1.8 million. But I want to note that of that $1.8 million in additional appropriations, it would be resulting in approximately $1.6 million in offsetting revenue. So if approved, the net impact would be a net use of fund balance of $210,000. And again, we'll be covering each of these requests in the upcoming slides. So starting with the community development department. The department is requesting a total of $481,000. They'll be presented in the following two slides. And on this slide, we have five city council work program items. The reason why they were not included in the adopted budget is primarily due to the timing of when the fiscal impact was, was actually determined. And that determination date was subsequent to the formal adoption of the budget. But listing these out very quickly, the banning of gas-powered leaf blowers, Dianza housing program, general plan authorization process, housing survey, as well as housing strategies. Additionally, a request for $25,000 of human service grants, on-call contracts of $10,000, which would result in offsetting revenue of $11,500. Unanticipated or unforeseen legal services for the Westport Special Project, $175,000, resulting in offsetting revenue of $201,000. And then lastly, the Plan Check Engineer Backfill, an amount of $175,000, resulting in additional revenue of $236,000. So again, looking at the total expenditure request of $481,000, generating or offsetting $449,000 in revenue. Moving to the Public Works Department, a total request of $178,000. The first two items here, Household Hazardous Waste Program and Recology Franchise Agreement. Both of these items are subject to reimbursement, but the extent of that reimbursement has yet to be determined. As a result, staff have elected to not include a revenue estimate at this time. But if determined prior to mid-year, we can make sure to program that at that time. And then the last request from Public Works would be additional part-time associate engineer costs for permit applications. There has been an increase or a surge in permit applications that have been received. Currently, the department has a part-time associate engineer that is budgeted for 20 hours per week. The additional $65,000 for this request would allow the part-time associate engineer to work 40 hours per week to absorb or address the backlog or the high volume, the increased volume in permit applications. Moving over to the capital improvement program, a total request of $1.2 million. This is going to be two capital improvement program projects. The first being McClellan Road Bike Way Improvement Phase III. This is a $1 million CIP project that would be offset with $1 million in revenue. This is reimbursable through the VERBS grant for the vehicle emissions reductions based at schools. And then next, the Homestead Dianza Signal Upgrade, $213,000. Again, fully reimbursable through the Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant. So to recap on the staffing side, we did discuss the part-time associate engineer of $65,000. Public Works Department is also requesting council, city council to consider the conversion of the currently existing limited-term senior transportation planner. There would be no fiscal impact in the current fiscal year, but there would be approximately $190,000 ongoing cost. Some of the notable projects that this position has been working for and responsible for would include the Via Community Shuttle, Measure B Funding of Highway 85, MTC Transformative Regional Projects. Also responsible for coordinating the payment for various Apple-funded transportation projects. These all reside within the bicycle transportation plan. And then also efforts for bike sharing and micro mobility. These are the recommendations. We have a couple more slides that I want to cover quickly. But at the end of the presentation, we can come back to the recommendation slide. So as discussed very early on, the next steps, the mid-year report would come to council during the month of March of 2021, shortly following the third quarter report during the month of May of 2021. And on the front of, or on the topic of transparency and engagement, city staff have been working diligently to, to create an interactive first quarter financial report and staff report through the use of, utilization of open-gup stories. We have here two QR codes. If anybody who is viewing, this presentation has an interest to, to view these stories in real time. All you have to do is scan that QR code. You'll be taken directly to these reports. We have snippets from each of the respective reports, very similar visualization to the transparency portal and other stories that have been published. One last note on, on this topic too, is the budget team has recently posted a number of budget-related videos that provide a high-level foundation and understanding on the city's budget and reporting process, as well as specific information to first quarter and the, the information that we've discussed this evening. And as part of this agenda item, we are going to be discussing the city council work program update and the dashboard that our innovation and technology department has assisted greatly to, to go live with. So with that, I will ask Terry Gerhart, our GIS manager, to request control and. Perfect.
So can I ask a clarifying question now or?
Would it be, would it be okay if we, if we just complete this quick demo of the dashboard and then?
Okay. So good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Terry Gerhart, the GIS manager in the Innovation Technology Department. It is my pleasure to introduce the new council work program dashboard in collaboration with the city manager as well as city staff. So I will be giving a demo of the dashboard this evening. However, if you, if council has any questions about updates on specific projects, the department are here to answer those questions. So the Work Council Program Dashboard is now available on the city's website. Sorry, do you see that now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So on the council page, if you go to the work program tab, you will see the dashboard listed there. But for demo purposes, I will go ahead and open it up into full screen. So over on the left side here, you see a summary of those projects. There's currently 48 projects in the program. The total budget is listed here, what's been expended so far, as well as the remaining budget. The next panel over is budget remaining in the project. As you can see, we have in green, the bread budget that's still remaining. And then blue is the budget that has been spent, and that's listed for each project. Then we have the projects broken down by a project, by progress. So as you could see, we have 22 that are currently in the research phase, three that are in the procurement phase, and so on. And next, we have them broken out by category. So quality of life has 18, housing 10, public engagement as well as sustainability, both have seven, and so on. Down at the bottom, you can see all of the projects are listed here in alphabetical order. So to dive in a little bit deeper on this dashboard, you can go ahead and filter the dashboard by project category. So here is, is it broken down by, by housing? You can see there's 10 projects within housing, the total budget for those projects, the individual project budgets, as well as it does narrow down the list of projects. From here, you can drill down a little bit farther. If I click on a specific project, you get the see details that highlights here. And then you can go into the actual project page. And this gives you the objective of the project. And here you can drill down to see what's happening in each phase of that project. So in this particular project, the research, planning phase, and procurement are all complete. And this project is currently in the execution phase. You do have a milestone update for each one of these phases that gives you a summary of what occurred during that, that phase. And then we have the start and end dates of those phases. And then the last time the, the project, this project was updated on the dashboard. So here I can also filter by department. Say I'm interested in projects by, that are managed by Parks and Rec. Here I can quickly see that there's four. Out of those four, one has a, has a budget, the others have no money allocated to them. And then what phase those projects are in. And then again, I can drill in and see the particulars on the, on this project. So the last filter here is project status. And that allows me to see which projects have been completed and which ones are in progress. So here we do have four projects completed. And those are listed here. With that, are there any questions?
Not a question, but this is very cool.
Awesome. That's so cool. And you have a dashboard for CIP also, right?
We do, yes. That is also available on the city's website, on the city's CIP page.
Yeah, there is a very nice VIP dashboard also. That's very cool. In the work program, I didn't see that, or you just came out with it? This is really nice.
Basically just finished. And so we were using this quarterly update on the work program to also demo the dashboard. So thanks for being patient with that. And, you know, I realize it takes a little bit of attention away on the actual status of the work. But you can see the majority of the 2021 work program is in progress and has start dates and stop dates, so you can look up for those things. Uh start dates and stop dates, so you can look up for those things you are particularly interested in. Budget allocated, you know, what stage it's in. It's pretty cool.
Yeah, how do I get there? I can find this, I can Google find the C I P on, but I couldn't find this one. Maybe it's.
Sure, uh so if you go to our city and then city council, we'll bring you to the city council page. And then it's those city work program tab.
Yeah, it's your work program. It's the city works program, so under city council.
Yeah, never, okay, never mind. I never looked at the city council page.
What? Okay.
Oh, so my two simple question. Uh so the property tax increase, is that because we have more properties changing hands? So they get reassessed though this year? Do we have some idea? Or it's because of one big project or one purchase?
No, exactly. Um there, there are a lot of um, I guess, different components or factors that go into the. Evaluation and determination of of property tax revenues that would come to the city. Um but the, the transfer of property is certainly one that had an impact, yes. Um I'll, I'll try to find some more specific information on that in the meantime.
Right, but I don't, we can't depend on that kind of an increase every.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
On a continuous basis, can we?
So looks like we do still have big hit under with the reduction of the transient tax uh revenue. But thank you, uh Deb and everyone. I see that you are trying hard to reduce expenses in every category. That's commendable to be conservative, even though we are uh in good shape, but you are still pretty conservative. That's.
Well, we just don't know, right? We have like two full quarters of revenues telling us in in COVID, but not. It's not enough to make me comfortable, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, other cities start cutting staff, cutting service, and we are okay, but we are still conservative.
And we, prop, Prop nineteen passed, right? So we may see a benefit from that, starting next, whenever it kicks in.
Passed, okay.
I think Prop nineteen passed. Or, or it could hurt us. It depends um how people take advantage of it.
And so a question, there is plan check engineer backfill. What is that? So there is a revenue. So this is something we charge for service and then there are expenses?
That is correct, yes. Um so within the, the building division of Community Development Department, um there has been an increase. In permanent plan check applications since the, the beginning of the pandemic period. Um additionally, there were unforeseen um. Um employee leaves that um created an additional backlog, um and additional work that needed to get completed. Um and so as a result, this request uh would be, would be used to assist um addressing that backlog. And when we talk about uh the offsetting revenue, um yes, part of that revenue is the fee to reimburse um the actual cost of that service. And then a thirty-five percent fee that would be negotiated as part of the actual contract um for those types of services, plan check and inspection. And I should have also mentioned that we do have Ben Food, uh Director of Community Development Department, if you would like to chime in and provide any additional information.
Uh, thank you, Zach. I think you got it. That's, that's exactly it. Thank you.
Yeah, and then I see that Westport also the legal services on, we have revenue from them, but expenses, so it's actually paid by the applicant.
Mm-hmm.
For all the.
That's correct. The, the functions more like a pass-through item.
Yeah, mm-hmm. And then if we have any extra revenue from the fees we charge, we keep them? Uh so we have a little extra.
Yeah, if there are any left, Zach, you want to take that, but I mentioned as it goes to the general fund, but we do have a lot of sort of administrative uh uh processes for, for any uh application. Um intake and uh quality control, you know, approving stamping plans, those kind of things and inspections. So we have a fair amount of administrative uh services that we provide that, that's covered within that thirty-five percent.
Right, and it's very important to note that um that the revenues that are generated, they um.
So.
Those, those revenues, the revenues are not calculated um and determined to be in excess of the total cost of performing that service. Um it's important that when fees are established that they do not exceed um.
They just cover the cost.
Exactly. You estimated very accurately. It's um. Are you, we're going to get presentation about the status of the work program, at least the top ten we identified or?
We did that the last, the last city council meeting. It weren't called the top ten, remember, they were called special projects. We status all of them.
Okay, so we don't go through them?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um so I am, I will make a motion. To one, accept the city manager's first-quarter financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. And city work program updates to adopt resolution number two zero dash one three four. Approving budget modification number two zero two one dash one oh six, increasing appropriations and revenues. By one million eight hundred seventy-three thousand two hundred ninety-eight dollars. And one million six hundred sixty-two thousand three hundred dollars respectively. And approve the conversion of limited-term senior transportation planner to permanent.
Second.
Um have we taken public comment yet?
Oh, um let me see if there was anyone there. There was nobody that raised their hand for public comment.
Well, thank you.
So now we can bring it back to discussion of the council.
Thank you. I, I just, I, I'm supportive of uh the motion. I will simply say that I think um. As, as the past couple of years have shown, w- we really do need um. A sustained focus on, on our transportation needs, you know, uh Darcy talked about. This, the, the issue at hand before, but this is not the first and won't be the last. And I think um, you know. Um we, we've done a good job and, and need to sustain this effort. And then in the, the permitting, um I talked to staff in, in greater detail. You know, they really are being swamped right now, and we need to be responsive. Uh to, to folks when they come into us for services and, you know, largely we, we. We cost recover all of it. So I think these are responsible measures going forward and. I really appreciate city staff for giving us surgical uh, you know, changes as we do every year. Um and because we uh were cautious in the beginning, right, we are now in a position to make. Uh these limited um adjustments to the budget. So thank you for the, thank you, staff, for all of your work on this.
Okay, any more discussion?
Um I do have question. Sorry. I mean, I noticed that, I guess, the project I care about is, one is development, uh. Development accountability and the other one is a design standard, objective standards. And those.
But that, this is not on the agenda, and you already talked for hours at this meeting. What is the matter with you? Can you be respectful and get your work done with staff offline? This is not part of what we're considering right now.
Um because the work program is on the agenda, so.
No, no, the work program is not on this agenda. The, what was on this agenda was the work program dashboard, which was, which was displayed.
In update, we are supposed to get quarterly update. I think that was what we requested, right? So when we update the budget, we'll get an update of the work program, so we know how it's progressing. And then, then if it's a uh direction is not what we expected, then this is our time to adjust, maybe put different priorities. I think that's the purpose of an update, right? That's why I'd like to um find out, because I feel. We were asked for our priorities, and my two priorities, I thought they were not making much progress, so I'd like to find out. On.
Yeah, we gave you a status last time when we gave you the um, the updated revenue status and we did a report, remember that? I can get you the staff report. There's the staff report and um a, a slide deck that we used. To update what was called the top ten, but they were special projects.
Okay, because I see that there is a call for proposal. So we are asking other, putting it out for someone to update our objective standard?
No, I don't think so. Here's what I might suggest is if you have interest on particular items on the current work program that you see on here. Um please look at the dashboard and then let us know if you have any questions.
Okay, yeah.
How's that?
Yeah, because I see R F P sent our October twenty twenty for mixed and residential uh design standard. So I thought that will be done in-house, so that's. Yeah, okay, I'll ask later.
Okay.
Okay, um John, Connor, Darcy, did you have anything?
Yeah. I would just ask if, if Deborah could send us that uh project update that she's just said, yes.
I want it to everybody. How's that?
Yep, that'll be fine.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would just say that this is a reflection of a lot of fiscal responsibility over the years. And um, you know, we've made some really wise uh financial decisions. This is coming back. I, I, I think it's, it's a whole suite of things. Uh it's great that Apple's doing well. I, I've always thought that um, you know, the comparison to being a company town was not really that apropos. Um but you know, the convergence of factors right now, uh not just in the business world, but in terms of how we invest our money. Um has um been contributing to this. This is not an insignificant amount. Um so I, I, I think uh we should just keep on going forward in this kind of um, you know, fiscal responsibility. Well, thanks. I, I would ask that we, we take a vote.
Um I, Adapt, thank you so much for the new format. It really has a lot of detail. Everything is so clear now. And I'd like to say that now that I look at C U S D having budget crisis. I actually find out Cupertino C T, we have a lot older interior. I think we have been really living on a show string part budget compared with them. We are eating spending, so.
Can we, can we move on? It's very late. Um yeah, we don't have to um talk about that. Now Kirsten, can you have a vote on this, please? There's already a motion in a second.
Councilmember Richao?
I.
Councilmember Six?
Yes.
Councilmember Willie?
Hi.
Nice to meet you, Paul.
Hi.
Mayor Sharp?
Hi.
Mission carries unanimously.
Okay, we are on to item eighteen, the proposed amendments to chapter two point four zero disaster council of the Cupertino municipal code. To better reflect the emergency management program. Staff report briefly, please.
Yeah, we can speed through this one.
Yes. Uh good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Tom Chin, Emergency Services Coordinator for the city of Cupertino. I'm here to introduce the proposed amendments to the Cupertino municipal code, chapter two point four zero. Uh you should be seeing a PowerPoint slide.
Yeah.
Coming up. The Public Safety Commission reviewed the proposed amendments and made a unanimous recommendation to city council to approve those amendments. Commissioners discussed the amendments and made the recommendation without any dissenting opinions. Subsequently, an additional amendment was added as a result of COVID nineteen emergency orders. The Disaster Council then reviewed, discussed, and recommended all amendments for approval without dissenting opinions. The recommended changes have been proposed in order to provide guidance to the emergency management activities before, during, and after. An emergency using national standards and best, best practices. The first recommended change is to the title of the chapter. The title change to the emergency management program addresses the overall scope of the chapter. The second recommended change is to rename the Office of Emergency Services to the Office of Emergency Management, which better describes the management and coordination role. Of the organization rather than direct service provision. The third recommendation change, recommended change designates the city manager as the chair of the disaster council and the mayor as the vice chair. This change provides year-over-year consistency while maintaining an elected representative on the disaster council. The fourth recommended change clarifies the voting members of the disaster council in order to verify a quorum and designates other members that may advise the voting members. And currently, the, the municipal code indicates section chiefs are members of the disaster council. However, those positions are often initially filled by those city department heads and may rotate throughout a prolonged emergency activation. This recommended change provides the consistency again before, during, and after an emergency. The fifth recommended change adds a section in order to comply with the California Emergency Services Act and to maintain the state's disaster council accreditation. The sixth recommended change clarifies duties of the disaster council, including specifying meeting frequency. And expanding the description of the disaster service worker volunteer program. The seventh recommended change clarifies administrative citations as a method of penalty for the via, for violations of the emergency orders. This change is modeled after COVID, COVID nineteen emergency orders and provides the, an appropriate penalty to the scope of the violation. The change maintains the ability to enforce, enforce both administrative citations and misdemeanor penalties. And in closing, again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members for reviewing the proposed amendments to Cupertino municipal code. Chapter two point four zero concerning disaster council. I'm available for any questions.
Um, Mr. Mayor, subject to having no members of the public looking to speak on this item and prior to any discussion by council. I would ask the city clerk conduct the first reading of ordinance number twenty dash twenty-two sixteen. And following that, I make a motion that ordinance number twenty dash twenty-two sixteen be read by title only and that the city clerks. Reading constitute the first reading thereof. Thank you.
And I'll second that motion. This is Rod.
Okay, and Rod, did you have some questions or not?
Que- questions?
You have your hand raised, or maybe that's.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was.
Okay, I'll lower.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, yeah. If no one from, yeah, this is all pretty standard stuff, and I went into it at the disaster council meeting. I think it's a great idea to remove the mayor as the chair of the meeting and uh appoint the city manager. Uh she makes more money than the council members and the mayor, so I think that's a perfect thing for her to do. Uh, so.
That's a good narrative.
A lot more, anyway.
I think you should clarify that she makes a lot more than all of the council members combined.
Combined, right.
And I'm totally worth it, totally worth it.
So Kirsten, uh can you take a roll call vote if there's no more discussion?
Hello, would you like me to read the title of the ordinance first?
Sure, of course, right, sorry.
This is the first reading of ordinance number two zero dash two-two-one-six, an ordinance of the city council of the city Cupertino, mending Cupertino. Municipal Code Chapter Two Point Four Zero concerning the Disaster Council and the Emergency Management Program. And I will proceed with the. Call. Richao?
Hi.
Councilmember Six?
Yes.
Councilmember Willie?
Hi.
Nice to meet you, Paul.
Hi.
Mayor Sharp?
Hi.
Mission carries unanimously.
Okay, nineteen Cupertino participation in Stevens Creek Corridor Transit Study. Staff report.
Good evening, council members. Uh good evening, mayor and council members. Um Chris Correll. Uh Senior Transportation Planner in the Public Works Department. Uh this evening, I'll give you a brief presentation on the, an update on the Stevens Creek Corridor Transit Study. And look for your input on our next steps. Um the purpose of this uh study, it's a, a multi-jurisdictional study um looking at. Stevens Creek Boulevard as a potential transit corridor. Uh this study is um. It is being led by V T A and participated in by Santa Clara, um County of Santa Clara, and um Cupertino. Um previously in uh July of twenty nineteen, uh we came to city council with a uh resolution to show our support. And, and working with neighboring communities to look at this corridor. Um when we initially came to council, there were some reservations about the exact language and a subcommittee was formed with uh council member Six and council member Paul. Um who worked with staff to come up with some new language um that included I two eighty in that resolution. As well as the decision to maintain all travel lanes on Stevens Creek and not convert a lane. as well as the decision to maintain all travel lanes on Stevens Creek and not convert a lane for bus rapid transit. Um, so fast forward a a year. Um, and we now have some um estimates on on the cost of a study. Um, VTA in this um in this chart that you're looking at, uh, the total cost of VTA would be two seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, I'm sorry, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The total cost of the study is seven hundred and fifty thousand. And then this matrix shows a breakdown of how each jurisdiction's um um uh contributions calculated. Cupertino has thirty percent of Stevens Creek. So the three options that we have, um i- if the city elects to participate in this study, one is to study Stevens Creek Boulevard only, which is what the other communities are wanting to do. Santa Clara, San Jose, um, the county and VTA. Um, if we do want to include one high-capacity spur, one location that's not on Stevens Creek, uh, the cost goes up to one hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-three. Um, and if we do want to look at the entirety of I two eighty within Cupertino, um, the the cost is quite significantly higher. It's uh five hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, one thing I forgot to mention eh when I started um is that you have a desk item, the initial staff report I published omitted option two. Um, so uh the 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 desk item staff report has that option in there. Um, and the the additional cost of looking at these spurs or options in Cupertino are shouldered by Cupertino entirely. They're not spread amongst the um other participants. So that wraps that wraps up the presentation. I'm available for questions.
Uh, well, if the other cities are not interested in two eighty, there's no point in Cupertino. Um, looking at it only for Cupertino, that doesn't make any sense at all. And then if it's Stevens Creek Boulevard only, um, I don't see the point in us participating. Um, that's just my opinion. Anyway, well, Rod and uh Darcy, you were on this committee, so uh what are your thoughts?
I'd be I'd be happy to go next, and I have a I have a graphic that I'd like to um have you look at as I um
I'll bring that up in one.
Make some questions.
There you go.
Yeah, so um I don't know, sat this afternoon and contemplating how I what I wanted to say about this and the questions I had, I just decided to take a look at, you know, the current view of the corridor we're talking about. This is Deansa College essentially to Deardon Station, right? Uh, that ultimately, it could be an effective connector because it's the it's the place where Bart lands and uh and Caltrain and so forth. So um uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but that really is the corridor we're talking about. And you can see that if one gets in one's car at Deardon Station and wants to drive to Deansa College without a lot of traffic, it's a it's eleven point six miles uh and fifteen minutes on I two eighty and then on eighty-five. If you however decide you want to take a VTA express bus down the corridor and then you change, I guess, to another bus there, it'll take you um just under an hour. Here it's showing fifty-five minutes midday. These times, of course, get longer if you're going uh into traffic um as as people often are trying to do, but you can see uh that VT the competition to VTA is um a car, and it's a car that somebody might own. It's a car that, you know, could be an Uber or a Lyft. Um, and there's just no comparison at an hour. Um, if you got in your car and you went down Stevens Creek Boulevard, you would in not you would cover a little less territory, nine miles in just about half an hour, just about half an hour. Were you to say uh go by uh two eighty, um, you would cover it in just about the same time. I'm showing here a minute less. So here here are the kind of uh questions um I have for for staff on this. Um, let's see, sorry. Um, if one travels, eh, wha- what is the professional assessment of why if one travels from Deansa College to Deardon by car under these light conditions? What are the technical reasons why the travel time is half of what it is if one proceeds down Stevens Creek Boulevard? Chris?
But so the reason really is that you have so many conflicts. You have um turning vehicle conflicts at every intersection. You have pedestrians, uh cyclists versus being on an uninterrupted flow um where the no stops are required.
Okay, so it it go it goes to the fact that a freeway has grade separations designed in where you have conflicts at nearly every intersection if you plow down Stevens Creek, okay? My second question. If you take that same trip by bus being about an hour, it it said that if we were to do, if we were to take real estate um to to do this, uh dedicated bus lanes, this bus rapid transit concept, um, we'd be looking, w- we could potentially cut this hour-long trip uh down to forty minutes. You'd have to do signal prioritization, so you'd have conflicts with the north-south traffic that is also signal prioritized, but um, the estimate I've heard is forty minutes. It seems like in a car, if you make no stops, you're looking at what what did we find here? Twenty-eight minutes. So is that forty minute estimate consistent with what you've heard from VTA or other sources?
Um, I've heard a a range that depends on factors such as whether or not you have buses that have uh loading from both doors at the same time, whether there's full signal priority or just a partial, which is very common where it doesn't really hold the signals. Um, but that's about in in the in the range. Uh, I've I've heard that I've heard couched in efficiency that you gain twenty to thirty percent efficiency of time.
Okay. So now let's assume that it's forty minutes. Uh, what happens if? What do you think happens to ridership if the car trip takes fifteen minutes and this new bus trip after we've done all this work, we've taken the real estate drops to forty minutes? What fraction of people that are getting in their cars for a fifteen-minute drive are going to be willing to take forty minutes, given this improved facility that we might create? Were it to be bus rapid transit?
So the question is, were it to be bus rapid transit and uh the vehicle travel time stays the same? How what percentage of people will you really capture?
Well, no, I'm saying that let's say that we've done a project that by some means uh cuts the transit time from its current hour to forty minutes. What then would we ex- how would we expect? Uh, what fraction of the cars that are commuting between these places, do you think? Wha- what fraction of drivers could we get out of their cars?
It's hard to say exactly the mode shift that you would get. You would you would definitely see some some increase in ridership, but um, it mo- it's more likely to come from people that um don't have a a vehicle as another option um because it's really hard to compete with those travel times. And especially with more and more motorists using Waze and more transit riders using transit apps to maximize their trip. They're going with the faster option.
Offer um option, I mean, if the parking around Deardon Station is very, very tight. So if you if you plan to go to San Jose downtown and then you have to spend time finding parking around there and then take a transit down to downtown, you are going to spend more time um finding.
Could be. I thank you. Let me let me keep going with my questions. Um, now let's talk about alignments. What do we have any figures for the capacity? How many employees uh would uh Apple Park and Infinite Loop and its adjacent buildings would take? I note that they're both along the two eighty corridor, and they must be our major employment in Cupertino. Do you have any figures on that?
Eh, I do. Apple Park has about twelve thousand eh eh max capacity. Um, we don't have a per building outside of that, but we know that there are about twenty-four thousand Apple employees within Cupertino.
Okay.
And that's uh, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, yeah, okay. So so wha- what what fraction are those twenty-four thousand of the total workforce here coming into our city?
We we have um this that twenty-four thousand does not include any contractors or those doing work with Apple. Um, but we do have thirty-nine thousand employees in Cupertino, so that's about two-thirds of the total wo- workforce.
So you're saying that some of those thirty-nine could also be contractors for Apple?
They could be, or there could, yes, that's possible.
Okay. But suffice it to say, if we picked an alignment which was Stevens Creek rather than two eighty, we would be missing the biggest employment centers in our city. In other words, uh, somebody desiring to take transit would then have to go from get from a Stevens Creek alignment, a stop at Stevens Creek and change to another seat that would take them up to say Infinite Loop or say Apple Park. Is that correct?
That's correct. It yeah, unless unless council chose to to with one of the options that allows for a spur or the I two eighty combination with Stevens Creek.
Okay, and and um that s- so VTA has basically refused to cover any of the cost of the of an I two eighty alignment? Is that correct?
Yes, the we we had discussions, the 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 group had discussions um about that as an option, but the cost was too great and they really wanted to focus on Stevens Creek corridor, which they felt was their the the original intent. So um, this is sort of, yeah.
Have they? After all this time in talking, um, has there been any meaningful approach on Stevens Creek that's that feasibly suggests we could get to a travel time competitive with a car?
Uh, this study is very, very high level and um is is really as scoped currently looks at maybe four or five locations where you'd get some illustrative concepts. Um, but it isn't really a study that is intended to result in a like a a project that's re- quite ready. Um, it's really more of a a planning exercise. Um, so it's hard to say that it's agnostic as to the um as to the mode. So it would be really hard to say at this stage what if there's any time savings uh that we could anticipate.
Okay, I mean, has any mode been suggested that would make this trip fast?
The the only um thing that's been suggested that is actually not part of this study at all is a an RFI that San Jose put out um that was sort of this kind of pie-in-the-sky call for projects from private um vendors and the Boring Company and another a a number of other kind of high um hi- high-tech companies uh submitted submissions, but that was more of a um a contest, if you will, um not an actual oh um nothing that was intended to result in uh a project in the near term.
Um, with regard to the dialogue with VTA, when you pointed out that there is no, they don't seem to have any time competitive suggestion and that that could compete with a car on two eighty, do they have any response to why they would would not be willing to support this at the same level that they would support a Stevens Creek project? Is it just because San Jose wants a street trolley on Stevens Creek or what?
You know, I I've heard in um not officially as a VTA statement, but I've heard a number of uh times uh staff from VTA mentioning that 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 freeways don't work for transit or that they've had uh issues with freeway transit projects in the past. Um, and I get the sense that VTA um wants to focus their transit into these corridors uh throughout the county um to better align with the the land use planning efforts that they're trying to dip their toes into.
Yeah, so we know they're implying to intensify on Stevens Creek Boulevard, but I don't understand how. What what I'm not rocking here is why Cupertino has an interest in a project uh that really wouldn't be time a- at all time competitive to a car. I mean, I I'm with Stephen on this. I I don't, I just don't understand um, you know, wha- why they refuse to look at these things that certain Southern California is doing this where Therese McMillan uh who's head of MTC came from. They have um dedicated bus lanes. They're moving a lot of people on freeways, and so are plenty of other regions. And we seem to be stuck. We seem to be stuck on street trolleys.
I think you know the reasons why VTA won't do it.
Well, I you know, I mean, it maybe this is maybe the street trolley on Stevens Creek is the is their their idea, but it's exactly the problem we have with light rail today. Too many stops, right? Too too much cross-traffic, too. The lack of grade separation. It's why the ridership is is so poor, so.
It's true. I mean, the 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 part of light rail from Almaden is very fast because it's separated grade, and then you get to San Jose and North First is very slow.
Um, it's pokey. It winds its way through the city, which is why it takes over ninety minutes to go from the Almaden Valley to Mountain View. It's why nobody does that. They go up eighty-five instead. But uh, you know, I I I just, I I don't, I I just can't. I can't see my way through to uh supporting this study at by any means. I think we ought to take our money, and I think we ought to consider doing our own study. I think we ought to consider um uh forming a JPA with cities in the West Valley and North County to um stand together at the VTA board. I think we ought to consider TMAs that we could form with other cities. I think we ought to consider expanding our uh via pilot program. And to so we could, you know, we could um a- and bring other cities into it. I think ideally through a JPA, but we need a standing body that's going to represent our interests. This is not it. Thank you.
All right, I do have one public comment before we go to back to council. So Jennifer Griffin, welcome.
Um, yes, hi, Mayor Steve. Yes, I am still awake. Um, yes, this is a very interesting proposal. Um, you know, okay, I will I believe me, but my first comment is I don't want to do anything to increase the speed down Stevens Creek because Weiner is going to come, Senator Weiner is going to come start down here again, putting in his four duplexes, and my house is within a quarter mile of his, you know, his dastardly plan to do stuff to Stevens Creek Boulevard. The other thing is this plan has been going on for years. Why are they trying to? What what is Deardon have anything to do with Deansa College? There is nothing in between, zero. I rode the bus to San Jose State from essentially Deansa College to San Jose State for two years, okay? Yeah, that's fine. I was a college student. Um, Deansa College is not the local junior college for San Jose. San Jose City College is, okay? That's great. You can go wherever you want to. But this is not a completely huge plan. I I I don't, I don't understand it. I I think San Jose has been obsessed with trying to get stuff past Valley Fair into Cupertino for years. They can't do fixed bus rapid transit. Um, it, you guys just gave, I'm sorry, Apple just took away a bunch of land because of the dedicated bike lanes. I'm sorry bicycle people. Um, the other thing is too, if you start putting, if you start taking land along there, you're going to rip up all the street trees and that is not going to go down well. I live down there. I plan to live here till I die on my property. And this thing, whatever they want to do, you know, I'm also scared now that we're going to wind up with some awful uh thing at Lawrence and two eighty, which is going to block traffic of trying to get on and off two eighty. This thing is dead in the water. Um, what does San Jose care about Deansa College? They have their own colleges. I'm, I'm really, really concerned about this. No, I, I, we, we need to check out of this thing. If, 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 if anything, just do buses on Stevens Creek Boulevard. It's, it's not fair. Um, and I'm, I'm really, you know, I'm sorry. Google and Duradon, I have about as much confidence in them as Senator Weiner and his big housing bills. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Um, let me go back and check if there was anybody else um that wanted to speak on this. Uh, nope. So we'll bring it back to council. Um, oh, yeah, let, let me go briefly. Uh, I, I would not favor participating in this study for multiple reasons. First, you wouldn't really want to go from Cupertino to Duradon to get to Bart, to take Bart to San Francisco, because you would take Caltrain. And if you wanted to take Caltrain, you'd go to Sunnyvale Station, not all the way to Duradon and then come back, including paying a much higher fare. There's probably not that many people in Cupertino uh that want to go down to downtown San Jose for any reason. Um, you know. Personally, we did occasionally to go to a jazz club, but uh not, I doubt if I ever saw anyone else from Cupertino there. And, and you would drive because it's much, much faster. Uh, as Rod pointed out, it's about a fifteen minute drive to get to Duradon. And you, of course, you wouldn't drive a car down Stevens Creek to Duradon anyway. Apple, it's almost immaterial um, the number of people at Apple, because Apple has its own transportation system that goes right to the building. So even if it did go down two eighty, you'd have to get Apple to drop their bus system and put their people on uh, on whatever VTA came up with, which uh they probably wouldn't want to do. Uh, much better, expanding.
In fairness, if, if they adopted the same plan we have for, you know, uh eighty-five, I eighty-five, right? You could have dedicated bus lanes and they could service both private and public buses. So that, I think that would make sense.
Um, maybe, um, but I don't know if anyone from Apple would go on the public bus and probably not enough other people to use the pri- to use the public bus, so.
Yeah, I mean, that would have to be studied, but at least, I mean.
You know, V, I, I think VIA is uh, if someone from Cupertino wants to go to Duradon Station, I think we expand VIA. And we've already had other cities interested in partnering with us and Los Altos has considered it. I can't remember if Saratoga did or not. Um, and I think the reason for Stevens Creek is they're looking at their urban, San Jose is looking at their urban villages on Stevens Creek and they want um, they want BRT and that's fine for them. You know, if they want BRT, they can, they can put in BRT, you know, have VTA do it. We don't have to pay for a study for this. Then Jennifer's right. I mean, you know, San Jose has Evergreen College and San Jose City College. Those are, those are San Jose's community colleges. It's not up to the foothill Deansa district to somehow um move people from San Jose up to Cupertino or um Los Altos Hills to attend community college. So, uh, yeah, I can't see us spending any money on this at all. And that's what I have to say.
Now, Mountain View was the other city that was interested in VIA.
Mountain View, okay. Um, I see John has his hand up. Go ahead.
Okay, so maybe if you could go back to the slide with the three options. I'm still trying to, oh, understand the, the overall concept here. So you, this is a joint study is what I'm understanding and I, I'm not understanding how we can have different levels of participation.
Sure, so it is a joint study. Um, the cost per city was derived by how long your segment of Stevens Creek is. And based on our segment length of Stevens Creek and Cupertino, our total is eighty-eight thousand, nine eighty-three. The two other options were added just for Cupertino because we wanted to include locations off of Stevens Creek because of Apple and our employment, heavy employment that not, doesn't align on Stevens Creek. And the, the other participants did not agree, um, but they said that if we, if Cupertino wants to do, chooses to do that, the, the city can pay for it. That's why those two options are, are more.
So where does the high-capacity spur come into play? Are, are you saying that, well, you'd put additional uh time to study a improvement to the Wolf Road two eighty or the Deansa two eighty? I mean, the high-capacity spur, I mean, I, I'd sure like to better understand what, you know, that would look like, you know, what's the purpose?
So the uh, the idea with what that one is, we, we could select any location and have the consultant study it as part of this larger study, but they may, may come back and say it's feasible or not feasible. And then if it's not feasible, why and if there's any, you know, lesser project that could be done?
So where I'm kind of, you know, heading and that is, you know, I, I do think we need to continue to improve our, our transportation. No question about it. Five years from now, with the growth that will continue and ten years from now, and obviously, we don't want it to just get more and more clogged, more and more slowing down. So I, I do feel we need to be uh continuously, maybe not solid continuous, but regularly uh checking for opportunities, uh thinking outside of the box. And how can we increase capacity on what we have? Uh, increase the throughput on what we have so that we reduce the, the uh time that it takes and stuff. And so uh, I, I'm a little bit confused in terms of, well, we say this would be a study, but I'd really, if, if we're going to propose something like this, I'd really like to see some, some tangible uh expected results. If I were to say, okay, I support option one, option two, option three. I'd like to see some tangible reports, uh, results that we'd be shooting for, targets, that if we were to do number one, we would be hoping to make improvements to um increase the capacity, meaning uh reducing all timing. Um, yes, it'll get people from San Jose shooting all the way through Cupertino, whatever those are. And I'm, I'm just not seeing those, so I can't really get my arms around putting our money into this joint study until I did hear something like that. But I do want to leave the message that um, without a doubt, I see our, our traffic uh within Cupertino is going to uh get more congested five years from now, ten years from now. It is going to take longer to get from point A to point B and we can't, you know, it's going to happen, right, wrong or indifferent. And so we should be looking at, at ways to improve that, um, however it is. And getting those ideas uh from experts, consultants and stuff. Wow, we look at this overall area and, you know, using a coordinated uh approach to, to better move traffic around. And so that's the message that I'd like to, to leave with that. I do think we need a uh, a, an ongoing study or uh several successive studies, like every couple of years. Maybe we uh do it in smaller segments, however that would play out. But that we do wind up percolating down to, okay, we're going to make some changes. We're going to make some changes to the Deansa Stevens Creek, um Fremont, Homestead, wherever we can make changes coordinating and wow, it, it increases. I, I used to commute up uh to Lam Research in, in Fremont and uh the one oh one um two eighty was, was just a nightmare. And so was seventeen and how do you get up to Fremont? But then they went and they made the, they totally redid all those intersections at uh seventeen and two eighty and wow, that, or one oh one, and that really made traffic flow tons better. What are we doing to, to look to the future and, and what might we be able to do? So I'd really like to leave that, you know, as the message that bring us some, some uh study that would truly, hopefully, give us some tangible results that we could then percolate down into some projects, so. So I don't see this as being it, yeah.
Um, Darcy.
You know, I don't really have much to say. It doesn't sound like we have support to move forward any iteration of this. I mean, I don't think anything that I say is going to affect that. But I will say that, you know, having been on this uh from the public elected official perspective from very early on, I, I might have been as early as two thousand eighteen. We, we did specify that we were trying to get this grade separated from Cupertino's perspective, meaning that down Stevens Creek, we didn't want it to affect traffic. Um, it was either going to be under or over uh the road. And um, you know, speed was, was important. Uh, that has always been important to us since the beginning. And, you know, personally, I think that in order for it to succeed in Cupertino, we would need to find a way to decouple uh forced development to transit. Uh, but of course, that's, that's a legislative issue on, on the statewide level. And so um, maybe this is an idea whose time has not um uh ripened yet. I, I think um, you know, it is true that we're not really looking at anything that would uh get us quickly to downtown San Jose. Um, I actually think that it's important, you know, I think it's really important from a long-term um infrastructural perspective to make sure that we are connected to the major urban hub of this area, um, you know, sometime within the next, you know, at the very most twenty years or so, because you're going to be uh seeing a, a major transit center as well um in downtown San Jose. And, you know, the idea being that hopefully we can uh really fix our infrastructural issues transit-wise. But this doesn't really look like it's going in that direction. It really does look like bus rapid transit, which um, as others have pointed out, is not something that is time competitive with cars. Um, I, I will say that I think that there are elements in San Jose that we can work with. Uh, I've been working with Vice Mayor Chappie Jones on this for a while and I really think that he has been working in good faith. The RFI that Chris uh mentioned was something that I was always led to believe was part of, part and parcel of this effort. Um, and I, I wasn't really fully cognizant of how that fit into the picture until we started having these discussions with VTA and it became very clear that they were committed to bus rapid transit or the like down Stevens Creek. Um, whereas San Jose, for their part, they, yeah, they conducted a whole RFI. Um, if you want to take a look at some really interesting um and technologically innovative proposals on, on the transit level, then you should go to San Jose's city website and pull up the uh RFI results. There were a number of proposals there that were very innovative. Um, and so, you know, I, I, I think this seems to have kind of morphed away from the idea that we want to fix an infrastructure problem uh in off the area. We're in the West Valley, yes. We kind of anchor the West Valley uh in a sense, given that Stevens Creek runs uh right down the middle of our, our city. And if you just go due east from there, you're essentially going to hit Duradon Station. So, you know, the, the other issue is that the third city involved here, Santa Clara, really has some issues going north-south. If you talk to um, you know, Santa Clara public officials, they will tell you that their interest is really trying to connect the stadium area down to Stevens Creek. Um, you know, because they, they really have, you know, i- issues, especially after, you know, events and whatnot. Uh, but, but with regular traffic, uh, when the economy is, is, is normal, uh, there, there are north-south connector issues. We have north-south connector issues. And so if we were to do something successful down Stevens Creek, that could be um expandable, then maybe we do something very significant with regard to the uh, the mass transit equation in, uh, in the South Bay and beyond. But I don't know if this is really the start to that kind of a solution. Uh, but again, I, I didn't hear uh support to go uh forward with any of the iterations. And so I'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll leave my comments at that point. You know, I, 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 I wish that we were able to um, you know, untie transit development and fix our infrastructural problems first. And, you know, um, if we can do that, I think Cupertino can make some very solid progress in this conversation. So, thanks.
Hey, um, Leon, do you have anything?
Okay, so if we go ahead, join San Jose, what they are, oh, they are studying is really just bus rapid transit, right? And then likely, if it were feasible, they would propose to have funding to build that bus rapid transit that likely will take away one lane of Stevens Creek. Is that the only thing they study?
No, actually, um, the, the, the study is um agnostic to modes. So it doesn't, it's not a study of bus rapid transit. It's a study of transit in this corridor. It's a high level. It even includes a look at the streets and how they work for bikes and pedestrians um also. The uh, our, the, the resolution that council uh adopted in July twenty nineteen specifically said that uh we would not consider taking away any lanes from Stevens Creek Boulevard.
So they will consider that in this study. It will not take away or it will be one option will take it away, but they will also consider the option of not taking it away.
At least in Cupertino.
So in Cupertino, they will not take away a lane?
Correct.
Okay, but if they are going to study traffic patterns, now is not a good time to study, right? Because everything is abnormal. Shouldn't wait a year or at least two years because I don't think it'll be normal in a year.
That, that's a, that's a, that is a true statement, but the um, they, they won't be studying uh traffic patterns as part of this, like the actual traffic um counts per se, but more, it's more of a visioning exercise.
And, you know, we were just asking for input, council input on these and uh we're appreciative of getting it. And I think um, uh, city staff echoes the sentiment, actually. Chris, I don't know if I spoke out of turn for you, but.
I wonder if I might add another comment to reinforce what Darcy said.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Uh, yeah, I really, I, I appreciate and honor the time that I know he's uh put into trying to see if we could get something in. trying to see if we could get something innovative done in this general corridor. And, you know, if it's possible to to do something that's not at grade, if there was a proposal on the table, if there was anything that looked like it could be possibly time competitive, um, you know, this could be really interesting. If there was, as we've now voted unanimously on the pad to 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 move forward, uh, a proposal for dedicated bus lanes um, on two eighty that got us all the way to downtown San Jose, I think there would be high value. I think you, as we've tried to to do on eighty-five and what we voted for was to see if we could bring, um, private parties running their shuttle buses uh, into say, okay, we're gonna, we we're, we wanna use these dedicated bus lanes to speed our employees past all the congestion that we see on on, um, eighty-five or two eighty on the freeway. And we're willing to pay a price, and that price helps us either fund, helps fund the infrastructure or and or allows us to subsidize public bus service for for everybody, for the teachers and all that come to our, you know, our city and who who wanna teach. And our folks that have some reason to go down to Deardon, um. You know, I, D- Darcy's right, that Deardon is going to become a major transit center. I'd like to also appreciate Chappy Jones. I know he's been working on this and trying to put this together. But frankly, I have to tell you, after looking at the study that VTA did on Highway eighty-five, I mean, even if we gave them a half a million dollars, I wouldn't feel very confident that we'd get a worthy study from it at this point.
Yeah.
Right, they're just not, they're not, I think, you know, if we, if we, if we just, if we, uh, we're gonna spend that kind of money, I would entrust it, uh, to our public works team and the professionals that they might hire. But sooner than I do VTA at this point, to just be frankly honest. And I hope Chappy's not too disappointed by our decision. I agree with Darcy, we ought to be working with these other cities and we ought to be solving these problems and we can't be a silo. Uh, but this is, I I don't see any, there's nothing I've heard about what's on the table here that seems worthy of spending this kind of money. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. So I think, uh.
Rodden mentioned a J, possible, uh, JPA from a west county for to form a JPA. So that means we will, we we might, uh, get a few cities together to do a real study that we like.
Yeah, I mean, if you form a JPA focused on transportation, you know, it's gonna be up to you on the council to continue. I I would say that, you know, in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, the reason we were so effective in getting substantial funding out of the measure for grade separations for Caltrain, nothing that San Jose cared about, but things that North County and West Valley cities cared about, three hundred and fifty million for, uh, the eighty-five thing, uh, was because we all stood together. And I think the problem I've observed since is it's hard to sustain that without an institution, right? Council members come and go, staff people come and go. If you have a standing body with regular meetings and appointees from every city, I think you have enough oomph to change the, you you at least have a half a chance of changing the equation at VTA without it, without the, with just ad hoc efforts.
Yeah.
Um, I I will tell you from all my experience, I think you have a very hard time of, um, sustaining the the organization that's needed to to really forge ahead. And as I say, you know, you could have, you you could look at transit management, uh, uh, an association, right? You could negotiate with big employers and and try to form a public-private partnership from a JPA. You could advocate at, um, at at VTA and frankly, MTC. You could, uh, expand our shuttle, our our now famous shuttle pilot. Um, there's all kinds of, uh, things that you could do with this structure if you had regular, uh, focus. And everybody put a little money in to support the framework.
Then we won't be second-class citizens at.
Well, I I think you have a chance. The problem is, Sa, VTA is good at dividing us and having their way. And I I just, I just haven't seen the sustained sticking together, uh, that that we had in twenty sixteen. I think it's hard to do without some sort of form of formal organization, that's what I'm saying.
Huh? Darcy can start next year as a mayor.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, yeah, I mean, um, and you'd have to get other city, you'd have to go sell this idea to other cities. But I think, you know, Chris, you know this, right? You've you've done a great job working with Mountain View, um, particularly, right? And we have formed sort of the the nexus of this this work. And, um, with with all of us now who were part of that in twenty sixteen gone, um, okay, Pat Bird is back from the Palo Alto Council, so he could be, he could be part of this. But, um, you know, you you know how much work it is to to continue these efforts. And I I do think, John said it, he talked about our need to to keep working on things. And it's true, we need to work on things, it's just we need to spend our money well as we do so, so I'd.
All right, can we finish?
Anyway, I'll stop, yeah.
Yeah, please, let's stop, it's, and, uh.
Yeah, I've gotta, I'm gonna say one thing real really quickly. And I want to add this to the subject more of our, um, of our item. I mean, I I hear what you're saying in terms of the strength in numbers, but we also have an issue of geography, it goes into history as well, uh, to the very reason why we incorporated some sixty-five, somewhat years ago. I mean, you know, San Jose is a bit of an octopus, right? I mean, that's that's, you know, the the well-known illustration. Um, y- you have an issue with geography, you're gonna run into it in any significant direction that you go. And, um, we we need to have a foot in that door, in that conversation. So if you're looking at this particular item, trying to get us east-west, you you can't, you can't bypass San Jose and just work with Santa Clara. Um, we've got Sunnyville we've got to deal with, we've got San Jose. And so, you know, I I think the JPA is an interesting idea. Um, I I I also think that if we're going to start thinking about it in those terms, you also have to think about strategically, what are you doing in order to bring that that very large transit agency into your conversation? Um, so so that's all I wanted to say. I mean, I I think it's a compelling idea, but I just wonder, you know, if if it if it originates as, um, kind of an adversarial, uh, mentality, what ultimately gets done if, um, that's how we're set up to begin with, so, um.
I I I completely respect where you're coming from. And all I would say is just take a look at the history of what VTA has done and where they've placed their investment, and tell me how we ever get a fair shot.
Yeah, I don't think it's adversarial to say that 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 not participating in this, uh, it's not adversarial, it's, it's just good sense. I mean, are you gonna trust VTA with even eighty-nine thousand dollars to do a study? I mean, given their history of how poorly they do studies? I mean, I I, I wouldn't, I mean. Look at the grand jury report of VTA.
Okay, so so sort of say that we're not gonna take any action here, right?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
We've received enough input.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're done with item nineteen then. Let's move on to council and staff comments and future agenda items. All right, how about staff comments first?
Um, I owe, this is just a quick one. I owe some feedback from my first meeting with CUSD Acting Superintendent regarding the action that council gave me a couple of weeks ago. So I'll, I'll do the first one in writing and kind of tell you what we've been talking about and update you um, that way in a separate email. This week.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
All right, who has future agenda items?
Oh, I'm happy to to go.
Okay.
I'll kind of temper it with, you know, 'cause, uh, we're here for the the community, for the residents. So Niang and I had a roundtable on, uh, last Saturday. And what were two of the biggest topics? The impact of cells in neighborhoods and the impact of school funding and possible closing of a school. And so I'd like to say that on the cell cell issues, I created a forum, I sent it to Deb, hoping that she would send it out to the, uh, uh, council. And this is what I had referred to earlier. And so if we need a study session or we need an agenda item, I do believe that residents deserve to, when they tell us they have a concern on cells being twenty feet from their front door, that it should be recorded in in the city. And whatever we can do gets put on that forum, they can look at it and make follow-up questions with us. As it stands right now, they come in, they speak at the city council, they put in an email to us, and they have nothing really to show for it. So that's my first request, is that we we get and a process in place so that we acknowledge that they have an issue and what steps we might take, whether it's asking Verizon or AT&amp;T to consider other sites. Where did they consider? Why aren't they good enough? So that's my first, uh, suggestion.
So if I could re, yeah, if I could respond.
Okay.
I didn't take your email as wanting to forward it to the other council members. What I did do is I forwarded it to city staff.
Okay.
To consider the intent of the form.
Yeah.
And we don't have a problem with, you know, keeping track of me, making the carriers ensure that they're looking at every possible other location other than, you know, the best location, quote-unquote, and keeping record of that, but not in a, on a yet another form. So, but we can keep track of it, um, during the permitting process because that is where those conversations happen as part of the record. So that people know that we're trying to ensure that the carriers are fol, not only following the guidelines, but paying attention to the right location.
Yeah, well, to me, I I use the word forum. I I am a paper person, 'cause I can carry it with me. But if it's a, uh, a a record that the city has that gets updated, where, you know, it really does have a set of criteria, and if the city chooses not to, if there was a particular cell tower at a particular location and we previously asked Verizon, can't you move it to a a different one further away from residents? Then we got a feedback from them saying absolutely not, for whatever reason.
This is, we we can, right, if there's two people, we can put something like this on the agenda. We don't have to discuss it right now. I think.
I'm trying to motivate.
We are endlessly going back to do the selfing because we just had the study session and explained the FCC, you know, the federal regulations on this. Um, you know, I don't like it any more than a lot of people, but, you know, we're kind of bound by it.
Actually, I request you the exactly the same thing. And because I feel I'm lost by a lot of these emails. I don't know who emailed what on which site, whether the staff has responded, what's the status? And it, if we can have even just a shared Google Doc, here are all the sites people had complained, and here are the status, staff has responded or not. So I don't have to check one by one. So this is not an agenda item we want to change policy, it's just, um, efficiency reason that it's.
Maybe we can have a a dashboard like we do for these other, um.
Well, can I just say that for items that aren't on the agenda, you can ask for staff to report back or ask for more information, um, if it's not gonna be added as a new agenda item and Deb can get back. I think she's heard your concerns.
Yes, I appreciate that we're not supposed to be discussing this.
And so the other, uh, significant topic was, uh, schools. And while we don't oversee the schools, um, it is part, an important part of our community. And I think we do have a important, um, uh, meeting place, a a forum, so to speak. And so I do think periodically we do need to have a discussion or a study session periodically so that the community knows that we know what's going on and that we really do get an update by CUSD and FUHSD. So I'm not saying that we need to put it on the schedule right away, but I do think that periodically that should be discussed, presented, uh, at the, uh, city council meeting because it is part of our community, so.
I think that's what the two plus two is for, for the council members on the two plus two to report back. About city council.
That is the purpose of the two by two.
Um, my understanding for John from John is, uh, two by two is a meeting that only two council members attend and the rest of the community are not there. But if we can schedule a council presentation, maybe invite, uh, superintendent to come give a presentation, maybe have a year, just an update of what's going on. Um, because of, a lot of the taxpayers that actually support the schools are not current parents anymore. It might be good to keep them engaged so they continue to support schools. And the superintendent can take the time to pitch what they are good things they are doing to all the taxpayers. Uh, yeah, apologize that the PC froze, so I'm on my phone now. It has, uh, yeah. So that's, I think, what his intention is. And that actually kind of fall in line with something I was going to propose. It's more like an inter-agency update. I'm, because I know that in Palo Alto City Council, they invite their legislators to come and give a presentation, uh, so there is time. Council, all five council members can interact with, uh, our legislators. For example, we can invite Evan Lo for a presentation and Cortezi, who just got elected, and Jonas Demitian, uh, that. So we have some relationship interaction with them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. What I was, I was, I'll talk to Leon about this later, but, uh, we can certainly request periodic updates from the districts.
Excellent, great, yeah.
Yeah. It might be easier now since it's online, but it used to be hard, be harder now. Yeah, hopefully this is easier.
By the way, they, I I read an article, they can't, they, uh, suspended or postponed the decision to close schools.
Not exactly, they did not actually. They are still hanging it, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get an update tomorrow in the, uh, two plus two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So should I go now or John, you're finished?
Yep, no, I'm done.
Okay, so one, uh, other thing I'd like to propose is, I mentioned it to, uh, Deb. I think I would like to see if we can expand the responsibility or clarify responsibility of Housing Commission to include the social services. Because they are the ones who actually are responsible for block grants to, uh, many social service nonprofits providing social services. And going forward, and I think throughout this year and going forward, we are going to see, um, residents, um, housed residents who might, uh, need need different things. And, uh, I'm hoping that the commission with this responsibility can help us connect with more residents and other agencies. And so we can all learn what kind of services are out there. And there is a place beside the city council that they can go and learn more.
Okay, okay, we can, we can put that on the agenda. That, that is a reasonable thing to to look at and to put on a future agenda. So we keep a running log, it will be, you know, it will probably be Darcy that would put it, that, uh, put schedules that, you know, whenever, you know.
I know that we, the, I know this needs, uh, if we, because I was thinking changing the name to Housing and Social Services, our, but then it really, it requires municipal code change. But then I'm thinking, is it possible we, uh, temporarily, um, expand the scope of Housing Commission for now until?
No.
Um, yeah, so can we just talk about? Um, yeah, so can we just talk about assigning them?
Yeah, we need to put it on the agenda.
Okay. So I'm not. Okay. Let me clarify, so I'm not right now.
Agenda item.
Okay, I'm proposing two-step approach. First, let's talk about possibility of expanding. Giving them a temporary authority to look into this issue because I know municipal code might take time and then maybe. Let's see if there is uh.
Right, so we need to put it on the agenda, not discuss it here.
I know, let me finish my proposal. So I want to clarify, I'm not requesting a municipal code change right now. I'm just proposing a discussion.
Right, I understand, and we will put it on the agenda.
Okay.
But not discuss the whole thing here.
You guys are not discussing, I'm finishing my thought. As long as you don't comment, we are not discussing it. Okay, I'm making my proposal.
Okay, are you done?
Yeah, yeah, I'm done.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
Uh, real quick. Um, I guess I'll report out really, really briefly on. The fact that November fifth, we had a library expansion stakeholders meeting, I went well. November sixth, I I met over Zoom the new CEO of SVLG. The leadership group, Ahmad Thomas. Um, and I think he's making his rounds, so he'll probably reach out to the rest. Uh, of you soon if he hasn't already, uh. Friday the thirteenth last week, um, we had a technology. Press conference over at the uh county park. Off of um off of Foothill for the fire department's equipment. Um, really interesting stuff. They actually showed us three of their vehicles and uh a a mobile. Um. Communication system that they can bring to various sites um that are, you know, um meeting that that kind of emergency communications. Um, they've been really active this season as as everyone everyone knows. And now on the sixteenth, um. At a meeting with staff, I think everyone probably is gonna have this regarding our prospective solid waste franchise agreement. Um, my three items with regard to. Um, future agenda items. I think I mentioned the lobbyist registration ordinance previously. And it seemed to get a lot of support. I want to check back in to make sure that. That got onto um.
Yep.
Other formally.
It did.
Okay, good. Um, I was gonna follow up on a letter to VTA regarding the measure B funding allocation. Um, and I mentioned that at the beginning of this meeting. So I'm just uh checking in to see if we want to agendize that. Or if we do agendize that, will that then be too late? Um, since the VTA board's meeting to discuss this. Um. So so you you have the two letters that you consider. Um, and so Mayor, um, I guess you can make a decision as to whether to put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Um, I also have an idea, speaking of commissions. I would like to explore the possibility of a public integrity commission. Um, there's been a lot of talk about about ethics, you know, when we tried to say, let's communicate. With the public and our commission's better, you know, ethics got kind of shoved down our throats. But I I I think that there's a lot of need for it. Um, you know, on on a societal level nationally, all all the way down to. Uh, our our local issues. You know, there's a lot of issues with, there are a lot of issues with objectivity. Um, I think a lobbyist registration ordinance kind of ties in well with public integrity. Um, and I I I think when you're talking about. Things like um evaluating our public officials or prospective public officials, you want to be able to deliver that with. Um, with 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 um objective authority. Uh, so uh, you know, the things that I've seen, especially in the aftermath, now that the election is past us. Um, you know, I I think it could have a lot of uh good value. For the uh community going forward. So uh those are my my ideas. Uh, is is there somebody that would be willing to, um, well, I I was, the the VTA uh letter I just put out there. Um, I guess Mayor, you can make a decision as to whether you want to go forward with that. But but a public integrity commission, is there, is there any second interest in that? Um, you know.
What is the deadline for the VTA letter that we need to, we need this right away?
I don't know if there's a hard deadline. I mean, I I know that the. That there's a board meeting where they would have considered. I I think they'll consider the same informational item that the PAC. Uh, considered uh under advisement, given the fact that we had a ten to oh. Uh, motion to not, um, you know, e-accept the report. And uh, you know, Roz referenced the Merck article, I looked that up while we were meeting. It's a good article. I mean, I I don't think they don't know about it. I mean, this has been clearly publicized and now I'm out. He has a letter, uh, hey, you know, you are authorized on your own to actually just.
Exactly.
From from the mayor mayor's office to write it, write, you know, something similar. Um. Yeah, so 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 I don't know, I I don't know if it's going to be um past its time. Hmm, by our December first uh meeting.
My recollection is that there's no real deadline for any action. It was a letter to basically. Firm up. The um, basically the position that the, you're from your last meeting. And then um Cities Association was going to. Develop a letter for all the mayors to sign on to, to kind of firm that up. Uh, but they were gonna wait to to do that pending uh Joe Simidian's meeting on the topic.
I see, okay. Well, that's, that seems pretty well told then, maybe maybe it doesn't really require a separate statement from us.
Um, I don't, I don't think it does, but I think that even if it does, we have. There's no, you know, deadline or anything like a commenter or anything like that.
I I mean, this is basically just a statement as to how to spend measure B funds and so. It's certainly not going to expire in the next two or three weeks.
Right.
So, yeah. Uh. Okay, well, I guess I guess for the 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 commission idea, um. You know, we can, m- maybe it can, maybe it can gestate for a little bit and then um we can revisit it near the end of the year. So.
Yeah, and the commission interviews will be, I guess, in January, right? So. Yeah.
Uh, January, February, something like that.
You can look at that in December, um. You know, it doesn't have to be, let's look how the December first meeting. Looks in terms of time, we do have moved the um. TDM study over to or the.
The TIF.
The TIF, right, the.
I recall, it's pretty heavy.
Yeah.
We'll talk about it.
Okay.
Alright, thanks.
Anything else before we adjourn? Ten, nine, okay. Oh. I. I just read that masks are now required outside in California.
Finally.
Covering some, except if you're driving in your car, you don't have to wear it, but uh. Yeah, for outside activities, now you're supposed to be wearing it as well.
Wow.
Okay. Very good. Good night, everyone, adjourned.